Earlier to the, the opening of the five thirty series of meetings. So I'm gonna call the Tuesday, June three, twenty twenty-five, Urbendale City Council meeting to order. Ask the city clerk to begin roll call.
Bodie?
Here.
Katchatori?
Here.
Carberry Montgomery?
Here.
Kroll?
Here.
Rosendahl?
Here.
Thank you.
Ask everybody to stand for the pledge allegiance as they're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Urbendale is a national leader in character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting tonight's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner consistent with these principles. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, please vote. Alright, see that passes. We've got two items for presentation tonight. First, we have a proclamation for Filipino-American History Month. Whereas Filipino-Americans have strengthened the United States and our own Urbendale community through distinguished service in the armed forces and vital contributions in healthcare, education, small business, the arts, labor, and public service. And whereas Filipino-Americans are among the nation's largest Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities, and sharing their history and heritage enriches Urbendale schools, workplaces, neighborhoods, and civic life. And whereas October is recognized nationally as Filipino-American History Month, honoring the rich heritage, enduring legacy, and countless contributions of Filipino-Americans to our shared story. Now therefore, I Blake Rosendahl, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Urbendale, do hereby proclaim October twenty twenty-five as Filipino-American History Month in Urbendale and encourage all residents to learn, share, and celebrate Filipino-American history and culture. I believe representatives for the Filipino-American Society are here to accept this as well.
Oh, yeah.
Whoever, whoever.
Come on Larry.
Alright, I guess. Yeah, so the Filipino-American Society has been around for over a decade now, and we are, we're happy to call Urbendale home. And so far, we have been able to partner with quite a few different local businesses and other nonprofit agencies across the, the city of Urbendale. We're extremely excited to continue our growth within the city. We are happy to have our biggest partnership with Living History Farms. And we host the state's largest Filipino festival at Living History Farms in June on the second Saturday every year. So we, we invite everyone to come out to the Filipino Fiesta the second Saturday of June and twenty twenty-six. So thank you again to the city council for being so welcoming and open to different cultures and different views. And yeah, we look forward to continuing our, our, our growth here in the city. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. Our second presentation is from the Endow Urbendale Organization. So I'd like to bring the members up and hear from them.
Kathleen Reese and I are proud to be here with Endow Urbendale. We have our board here today as well. And there's some exciting news. We just finished our fifteenth grant cycle. We get to get out this money that we have in our endowment. We have a well over six hundred thousand dollar endowment in Urbendale, which is wonderful. And it's funded by city members.
City residents, there's some businesses that also support as well. And so we're very thankful for the continued support that allows us to give these grants out each year. We've given over ninety grants out totaling greater than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the last fifteen years. So it's pretty exciting. And I'm excited to tell you that this year, we're giving out twenty-six thousand five hundred dollars worth of grants. There's nine that we're able to give out. We had thirteen that actually submitted grants and nine that we were able to award. So I'm gonna give you the list. The first one is to Living History Farms, and it's the fourth of an installment of four. It's twenty-five hundred dollars that goes to their cultivation complex project. So hopefully you guys have got a chance to go and see that. It's a great project we're happy to support. The Urbendale Food Pantry, this is our second installment as well, twenty-five hundred dollars. This will be four installments that we'll be able to make over the next few years. And that is towards the renovation of their new facility. So they're doing lots of great things over there. The next one is Girl Scouts of Greater Iowa. We're able to give twenty-five hundred dollars to them to help fund the membership fees for the Urbendale girls that are a part of their mission outreach program. So they're doing great things over there and we're happy to support. The next one is the Urbendale Lions Club. And the cool thing about this is we're able to give three thousand dollars to fund these comfort kits that they're gonna put together that will actually support the Urbendale Fire Department and the Police Department as well. As their outhouses where these kids need something and their, their time where there's a crisis going on, they're able to deliver those. So that's very nice. The Valerius PTO, we're giving twenty-three hundred dollars to fund their annual Culture All Day program fees. So this is something that involves all the students within the Valerius school system. The Urbendale Historical Society, they're getting three thousand dollars to digitize their historical school and community newspapers. So these are things that have been around forever, and we're gonna be able to save those. And the library is also gonna be able to be supportive in utilizing these materials. The Waki Community Schools Foundation, we have seventeen hundred dollars to purchase backpacks, school supplies, and hygiene products for our out-of-country students that are actually living within the Urbendale School District bounds. So the, the Waki School District, but within our city of Urbendale. And then we also get to support the Urbendale Schools and Alumni Foundation. We're giving them five thousand dollars to support their Make a Difference Classroom Grants. And lastly, UCAN, four thousand dollars to them. And again, for backpacks and school supplies for those students who live in Urbendale and have needs. So we get to do lots of good, and we thank everybody in the community for supporting that. And we get to give these out tomorrow at our Economic Development Advisory, our, our group that we're having for our Uplift Day tomorrow. So very exciting. Thank you all for including us.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing in this group. Alright, we're gonna be moving into Citizens Forum. At this time, individuals can address the council on a matter that is not part of a public hearing or part of tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to the council on something that's not part of a public forum item later? Alright, hearing none. It asks that we have a motion to approve the October eight meeting minutes?
So move. Second.
The motion, oh yeah, I'm supposed, motion by Bodie, second by Katchatori. Any discussion, otherwise, please vote.
Did that come through to you all?
Not yet.
I got it. I seem to be the only one.
I got it, but I abstained.
If I may take a voice vote for the remaining ones, it looks like it got angry with my connection. Katchatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, that passes. Next is the consent agenda. There are eighteen items for approval. Asked motion to have, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Katchatori. Any discussion, otherwise, please vote.
Unfortunately, the software lost connection with you all. If I may do the same thing here, then I'll.
Yeah, sounds good.
Katchatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that passes then. Okay. So next up on our meeting is seven point one. It's a public hearing for the Meredith Drive Right-of-Way Voluntary Boundary Adjustment. Public hearing is being continued from the October eight meeting. The official notice was published on September nineteen, twenty twenty-five. The corrected legal description was published on October eight, twenty twenty-five in the Des Moines Register. I would ask the clerk if there were any objections to that notice published?
There were none.
Alright, Steve is here to introduce the topic, so Steve, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening all. I will try my best to keep track of which way is up as I present, what, eleven of the next twelve items to you or something like that? So, uh, let me get right drawing up. There we go. Okay, so this, as Blake mentioned, is just a continuation of the public hearing from, from two weeks ago. And this is the item where we just need to get some right-of-way that was owned by Urbendale, but in the city of Grimes, into the city of Urbendale. We corrected the error with the legal description, so that's taken care of. And the timing of this is gonna allow us to take the Schaefer property located on the north side of Meredith, these parcels right here, along with this right-of-way to the City Development Board at the same time. And we anticipate, Maria, correct me if I'm wrong, they will set that public hearing at their November meeting to be in December, correct? Okay. So, and then we can take care of that and bring those parcels in. So pretty straightforward. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Steve? We are still in public hearings, so if there is anybody that would like to speak for or against this item, now is the time to do that. Please come up to the podium. Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So move.
Motion by Bodie?
Second.
Second by Carberry Montgomery. Any discussion, please vote.
I have not been able to fix.
Okay. Yeah, we can go voice vote.
Katchatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright. That passes. Any comments on this item before we move to vote? Or questions? Alright, sounds good. There is one item for consideration.
I move resolution two sixty-seven dash twenty twenty-five.
Motion by Bodie?
Second.
Second by Kroll. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Katchatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, that passes. Gonna move into item seven point two. This is a public hearing for the Des Moines Christian School Meredith Drive Campus Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan and Rezoning from A1 Agriculture Reserve District to PUD Planned Unit Development District. Notice for this item was published on October three in the Des Moines Register. I would ask the clerk if there were any objections to that notice as published?
There were none.
Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Kroll?
Second.
Second by Bodie. Any discussion, please vote?
Katchatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Joe.
I'm gonna turn it over to Steve to do the presentation on this.
Okay, so lots of discussion about this particular developer for quite some time now, and it's finally getting to you. And the good news is that all of these related site plans and everything can come to you at the same time. But this is the most important step, which is to rezone this property and, and to, to a PUD, provided you with that PUD master plan. A lot of our typical items are covered in that document. We can certainly get into any of that that you would wanna get to. In general, this is the master plan for the hundred and two acres. Wanna stress that this is conceptual. You know, this is the best guess at this time, what this would look like in the eventual full build-out. Certainly, it's probably going to change down the road. And should you choose to approve this later on in the agenda, the first two phases of this really would be the initial building of the high school, which is this building right here, pretty much located in the middle of the site. It would have access only from Meredith, would be the first few parking lots, and that would really be it. And then also on the agenda is the Early Education Center down here in the southwest corner. But certainly wanted you to see, you know, what the best guess is on what this might look like. So a number of things in that, in that PUD that are typical. There's some things in there that are probably a little bit different. I should probably mention that the City Development Board on their, in their public hearing September ninth, they did formally approve this coming into Urbendale. And we have been made aware that Secretary of State's office is ready to record this pending payment of the fee. So this should be done in the next few days to be officially official, if that's the right way we wanna put it. So that this will be.
Who's paying the fee?
City is.
How much is the fee?
Yeah, I don't remember. Nicole, do you recall?
Three hundred and seventeen dollars.
There's a lot of pages that go with it.
Okay, so it's just recording it?
Exactly. Yeah, it's just to record it to make it official. And it gets recorded with both cities, I believe, does it not?
Yes, it, the annexation documents are recorded with the state and.
Okay, so that will officially bring it in. So with that, you know, as background, now is the time to bring this to you. PNZ, obviously, I put in the report, PNZ saw some of this stuff at their September eighth meeting, and they recommended approval, subject to the City Development Board approval, obviously. And then also subject to the conditions for both of the site plans. Number of things, some of the specifics of which are in the site plans. There's entrance features up here along Meredith with some monument signage, and then some fencing that basically runs along Meredith Drive. Looks very attractive, in my opinion, on the site plans when you look at that. There's a portion of the trail that you can see here on this conceptual plan. You probably saw in the reports, the ultimate goal is to get a trail that goes all the way from Aurora up to Meredith. Still trying to figure out exactly where that's gonna be located and what the exact timing of get that getting, being installed would be. It's probably fair to say, at the next phase of a plat or a site plan, we'd probably expect to get that all the way up there, but that's still something that we're looking at. Because of the existing residential adjacent here to the east, there is a fifty-foot buffer, excuse me, there's actually a fifty-foot building setback and landscape buffer around the west, north, and east sides. It's thirty-five feet along Aurora. And certainly that fifty feet is gonna be beefed up a little bit more in this residential side, which again, you can see that on the site plan. And then there is some birmingham through that as well. All of that planting will be done here initially, just to get some growth going on that particular plant material to provide that screen. And then down the road, when some of these future phases come in, the hope is that we can have some of that landscaping beginning to get mature at that point, which will help screen all those uses from those adjacent neighbors. I think off the top of my head, that's probably all I will mention at this point. Plan and zoning commission does recommend approval of the amendment to the comp plan and the rezoning, and I'll need two separate motions for each of those. And I would be happy to answer any questions, and we've got representatives representing this project here that could answer questions as well.
Steve, can you talk about or, and show pictures of some of the items listed out in the architectural requirements? I have, I didn't even know how to Google what a tensile roof covering thing was. So I, that one I'm real curious about, but also for the buildings not facing Aurora and Meredith. And Meredith is spelled wrong in that third paragraph under architectural requirements. I just noticed, but.
Thank you for pointing that out. So here's the early education center, and this is what you would see down from, from Aurora. There's more brick on this now than was originally anticipated. You can see the gymnasium, which kinda sticks back behind. And I, you know what? If I think about it, I'm trying to think if I have, I know that I do have renderings for the high school, but I'm not sure. Let me check one thing real quick, if you will indulge me for just a second. Let me see if I can find. Essentially, the, the architectural materials for the high school are, it's, it's precast concrete, but there's some, it looks more like stone and brick from Meredith. And the good part about it, well, good part about it, the reality of it is, that stuff is gonna be several hundred feet south of Meredith and several hundred feet north of Aurora. So it's gonna be quite a ways, and there's a ton of landscaping in there too. So regardless of what the materials are to some extent, you're not gonna know if it's precast concrete or if it's brick. I will say that. Let me see here. Yeah, I apologize. I don't think, some of these drawings were so big, and I was putting them in other places, and I don't think I have a rendering of the high school in the middle of the site. I do have the rendering for the early education center that I just sent you. I will say, that said, we do not yet have drawings. And correct me if I'm wrong, do you guys have, have you even looked at any drawings for some of the future?
That's from August, so it's valid.
Hmm, oh, you did, okay. Yeah, there should be.
Let's see if I can.
Anyway, any of those future buildings, like just north and just, just south of the high school, have you even done renderings of those? You haven't, yeah, correct, okay. Yeah, so.
I mean, I guess I'm very, I'm very specifically concerned about the roof of the fieldhouse, as it's called out. Cause that sounds very suspicious to me, and I'm sure it's not, but.
So here's the high school. Annika saved my bacon, so kudos to Annika, as I'm trying to keep ninety million drawings up here straight. But, so this is what the high school looks like. And again, we can get into more details on this, on the site plan, but.
Is the fieldhouse a separate building? I was trying to.
Would be a separate building, yes.
And is that not part of phase?
That is correct. That would be part of it. Here's the good news that I will tell you. That would be part of a future plat, because right now, that's in, that's in a, an outlaw, which is not a buildable lot. So before any other structures either side of this high school would get built, they'd have to come back in with another plat, and they would have to come back in with the site plan. So you're gonna get to see exactly what that building would look like, which at this point, nobody's got a picture of what that building would look like, what those materials would be, and then you would be able to address that at that time.
I mean, can you roughly tell me what this roofing material looks like?
Wanna come up and give it a shot?
The tensile roof covering consisting of PVC membrane over polyester woven back. I mean, is this like an inflatable building or what? I, I guess that, that's what it sounds like to me, but I couldn't even figure out how to Google it.
Sarah Herman, my address too?
Yeah.
One zero zero four fifty-seventh Street, West Des Moines, Iowa. So a tensile roof structure would be like, how it would look to somebody that wasn't up close to it is, it does look like a PVC-type roofing product. So if you've seen a collegiate fieldhouse, sometimes they have a tensile roof structure. It is.
Like a bubble?
A bubble is another type of a fabric structure. A bubble often goes down all the sides as well, so that's the material.
I have a concern about that as being listed as a material in the plan. If, if we can't figure out what it looks like, cause that doesn't sound very.
Permanent?
Yes.
So just for clarification, just so everybody knows what you're referencing. So you're talking about the current language and the architectural requirements in the PUD master plan. And I think specifically, you're mentioning those last two paragraphs. Other wall materials may be approved if appropriate to a particular theme that portrays an image of conservative quality and durability. Common concrete unit masonry and exposed fasciner metal walls shall not be permitted. And then it says for the early education, athletic facilities, and ancillary buildings, approved wall materials to include cement board siding, exposed fasciner metal walls or siding, cultured stone, and precast concrete panels with no architectural finish.
Yes, those two paragraphs, as well as the.
And then the second one?
The fieldhouse athletic facility.
May be constructed of a tensile roof covering consisting of PVC membrane over polyester woven backing. That's what you're referencing specifically.
Yeah.
Let's try.
I mean, if none of these, I mean, we're approving the early education facility is part of activities today, but are we approving any other athletic facilities, ancillary billings, or the fieldhouse? So, I mean, I guess I wanna see us be much more specific about materials for those. I mean, what's, the high school, I think with the drawings you showed, looks, looks fine. But these other buildings are likely going to be able to be seen from Douglas, or not Aurora and Meredith. And I wanna make sure they look permanent and.
Thinking out loud, could we just change that second paragraph to something like the fieldhouse athletic facility can be, shall be constructed of a material to be determined at a later date and approved by council? You know, something of that nature?
I, I mean, that seems reasonable. I just, I don't like the uncertain nature of the wording.
Later?
Yeah. And just explain the image that you see there. So like, this, this is actually a, a fieldhouse at a high school in a different state, but it was one that I was able to find where the roof structure that you're seeing right there, that is a tensile roof structure.
Yeah, I don't particularly think that's appropriate. So I guess your TBD language is probably appropriate. I mean, I don't think I need to hold the whole thing up over this, but I think there's just too much vagueness in these other buildings besides the early education and the high school building in terms of materials.
Nicole, can you flip that back to? Just to refer, we're talking specifically about this building right here is what we're discussing.
That's the field, the proposed fieldhouse.
Correct.
So the pictures you showed, I mean, show me where the hi, the high school is.
Right here.
Is that building? Okay, so we're really only approving this building and then the lower left-hand corner.
So this item would be approving the rezoning to a PUD. And then if we wanna tweak the language of the architectural requirement, we can do that. And then should you approve that, then we're gonna open up the door to come back and show you specifically, and you just saw the drawings for the high school, and then for this early education center down here in the corner. Beyond that, everything else that you see here is in an outlaw, and it is not known at this point if or when it will be constructed and exactly how it's gonna look, just don't know.
So what are the, I guess, the proposed buildings south of the high school as you're going around the lake?
Do you remember what those are? I had your key.
Some are just placeholders, but one might be a future STEM building, and then another one is a performance, performing arts facility.
Yeah, I guess, can you pull up the early education rendering again? Need more tabs, Steve.
And so this one, this one's nice because the gym kinda sits back behind. And then you'll see, this is what, this is all brick, I assume. This brown color is brick.
Light color at the base is all brick.
Yep.
The darker brown color is brick.
Okay, so this is all brick, all of this darker brown is brick, and this is the nietzsche or some other sort of siding, yeah. So. Yep, so this, so this would meet, you know, basically our predominantly brick requirement that we typically see.
Is the east side of that building the same treatment?
Yes, it is.
The backside is all brick.
Yep. And then here's a, this is, that view that I just showed you was kinda more from the southwest, this is kinda more from the southeast. So it does wrap around, so that that's what you would see. So this would be very typical of any other building we would see in town that would be considered to be predominantly brick. And then like I said, the high school drawings that you saw a minute ago, those are so far off of Aurora and Meredith because they're in the middle of the site, you wouldn't be able to tell that it wasn't brick. Because again, they have the form liners, the, what's kinda nice about the precast concrete is you can put patterns in it to make it look like brick or stone or that type of thing, so. And then that also has the more earth tone colors. So it sounds like maybe, maybe what we should do, based on the concerns, is just change that second paragraph to just be that the fieldhouse athletic facilities shall be constructed of materials to be determined at a later date and approved by the city council. Something very close to that. If that's acceptable to everybody, that's, I guess, what I would propose.
What about the last two paragraphs? How do you guys feel about those? And I guess approved, who, who would do the future approving? The other, other wall materials? The other, other wall materials may be approved if appropriate.
That would be, generally, that's at the time of site plan. Again, for every other future building, you'll get to see a site plan, and we would articulate to you at that time what those materials are. And if you like it, you'd approve it, and if you say, nah, I'd rather like to see something else, then that's a change that you could request.
I guess I, I don't find that paragraph as problematic as the last one. Cuz the, you know, precast concrete panels with no architectural finish, uh, I think leads it very open to, um, having, uh, you know, whole buildings or other similar, uh, buildings in my reading of this.
No architectural finish would just be in like no form liners, probably, or?
Correct.
Okay.
So like the top of the gym that peaks up above does not have a form liner.
That would, you're, you were saying it's speci- like it, it would be more in those realms of that, the building, the, the gym sitting behind, right? You're, okay.
Cuz I don't particularly like the gym that's popping up out of the early education building, but I think the front draws your attention, so I'm not as worried about that. But if the site is just filled with buildings that look like that top part peeking out, that's not, uh, I think, appropriate.
Can we discuss anything else, or?
You, go right ahead. I wanted to ta- well, hold on. I wanted to talk about traffic. I don't, it's all over the place with these so many different items. Is this the appropriate place to talk about this, or?
Yeah, cuz this is the rezoning to allow it to be built.
Well, when we had the, um, or was yours related to the?
No.
Okay.
Do, do we maybe wanna wrap this, just making sure that we wanna close this one before we go to the next topic?
I know, Nicole, do you need to like write something down, or? How would we, um?
I, I do wanna touch on stormwater.
Yeah, I mean, I wanna talk about traffic and stormwater, but yeah.
I, I mean, just like, close the, the architectural piece, building materials discussion, and then we can move on to the next topic.
Gotcha. How do we, how do we?
I'm fine with the, with the, the proposal Steve has made.
Okay.
With regard to the, uh, the roof covering.
Yeah.
And, and I don't have any problem with that last paragraph. I think, I, it, it seems fairly normal to me.
Yep. I think that's fair.
It, it is more, more typical. I think that's right.
Um, oh, I, I would be voting against it if we keep it, that last paragraph as is. I think it just leaves us open to, um, too much, uh, question on what, um, materials would be used.
You're talking about the last paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
The precast, I mean, wall materials to include cement board siding. I mean.
Is, is the concern that there's gonna be an athletic facility that's just straight up no features?
Or an ancillary building, STEM building, performing arts building. Any of the other buildings on here would be included in an athletic facility or an ancillary building. And there's probably half a dozen other buildings shown on the, on the, uh, site plan.
I mean, is, is a potential solution to this saying that approved wall materials to include a mix of listed elements? I mean, is that, is that kind of? Cuz I, I, I don't know. Yeah.
I don't want a building that looks like the top of the gym on the early education. And that's what pre, I can't keep everything on, you know, concrete panels with no architectural finish was indicated to be.
We could do the same thing with the last paragraph that we're doing with that previous paragraph that, that Steve had proposed to change to and just make it to be determined.
That's, Joe, that's exa-
I would be, I'd be okay with that.
That's exactly what I was just getting ready to throw out there, is like, maybe we break up the last paragraph. If the early education center is acceptable the way it is, and I think I hear that it is, maybe what we do is we just add athletic facilities and ancillary buildings to that second paragraph above. Cuz the fact of the matter is, what other athletic buildings and ancillary buildings there are gonna be and when they are gonna be, we don't know, right? Is that, you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, so, uh, my name is Nate Frangie, uh, six oh five Northwest Harvest Court Grimes, uh, acting as the owner rep for Des Moines Christian. A couple of things that I just wanna point out, that last paragraph, you know, we're dealing with the early education, which you've seen renderings of now. Uh, ancillary building and as far as athletic facilities, there's only a few buildings that we're talking about here. And we're dealing with concession stands, some restrooms.
Which is what? That's right here, right?
Correct, yep, between the, uh, baseball and softball field. Um, and then for the stadium itself, um, concessions would be there on the north, uh, upper right corner. So, correct, yep, so.
But there's four other buildings, or five other buildings that are not concession stands, that are not the high school or early education building.
Correct, but I don't know that they would necessarily fit within this last paragraph that's really speaking to three types of buildings.
Well, I want a paragraph then that includes all the buildings on the site.
Okay, yeah, we could, we could break it down a little bit further. So what, I think the point Nate is making, and correct me if I'm wrong, is these buildings, which the STEM building, the performing arts building, maybe a middle school down here.
Correct, so then.
And, and this building up here, they would all fall into the top paragraph?
Correct.
Whereas what we're talking about specifically are athletic facilities and ancillary buildings, which again, are these two, are these two or three buildings here. But again, I think we.
Can we expand?
Yes.
I mean, to articulate ac- any academic buildings? I don't, I don't know if that covers enough of the, I mean, I'm fine, I mean, a tiny concession stand is not a big deal. It doesn't need to be brick, but, uh, you know, those will be the first two buildings that you see from Meredith, so, um, as I'm looking at the map. But I wanna make sure that the academic buildings are all of significant, um, of significance, I guess, architecturally.
Right, and in general, we would agree that those academic buildings
Yeah.
uh, would fall under paragraph one.
Okay.
And meet those paragraph one requirements.
So we could certainly, so I think to your point, Bridget, we could enhance the first paragraph to make sure that people understand it does include these other future academic buildings. And then we could tweak the second paragraph, as we discussed, for the field house, and then we could add athletic facilities and ancillary buildings to that, so that the early education building is kinda standing on its own in that last paragraph. We do that, does that work?
I think so.
Okay. That work for you too?
I didn't catch that last, the, the last part.
So basically, we take athletic facilities and ancillary buildings out of this last paragraph, early education center would stand on his own, on its own, as they have seen. We would add athletic facilities and ancillary buildings up here in a, in a paragraph that would say would be constructed of materials, future, materials to be determined in the future and approved by council.
Yep, makes sense.
Okay.
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 So do we have that?
Somebody had to.
I mean, we're, we're recording too, so we can reflect back, but.
At one more time for me what you just said, I.
Oh, really? Okay, so the second paragraph is gonna say the field house athletic facility and other future athletic facilities and ancillary buildings shall be materials, shall be, shall consist of materials to be determined and approved by the city council. Anything else?
The only other thought is to define the ancillary, what ancillary buildings are.
Oh.
If that's benefit.
And then the first paragraph, predominant building materials.
Yeah, predominant, predominant materials for all future academic buildings shall consist of. Yeah, we could just insert that. And then I think that gets us what we need, and again, you will see future plats and site plans for each of these buildings. So you'll have another chance to look at it and say, yep, that's what I was thinking, that works.
Um, my other question, and it's more just, um, related to the previous hearings that we had on this at the annexation time. I'm very concerned about traffic on Aurora as it ex- as Aurora exists today. I know there are grimes issues, but that road is very dangerous, especially when you add more teenage, uh, drivers to it. Um, so I wanna make sure that we're keeping, uh, an eye on that, and at Meredith, traffic patterns have changed. I know you moved recently, Steve, but.
I thought long, not very long.
Traffic patterns have changed.
I would agree.
Substantially, and I'm very concerned, um, that we need to have a light somewhere, and I know there's warrants and blah, blah, blah. Uh, traffic engineers are the best, but the, these are two streets that we need to keep an eye on, especially with six hundred plus staff, students coming in, and then you, I think of football Friday night, uh, is being lots of fun too, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think the honest answer is, you know, Meredith as constructed today can take a lot of traffic. There's gonna be turn lanes involved.
But I think we need to start thinking about traffic signals.
Well, we're gonna keep an eye on it, and there's a section in the PUD master plan on that, and to your point, when we ever get to the point where we've got athletic fields and stuff happening up here, you know, that would certainly be, uh, a reasonable time to take another look at it, see what traffic looks like and, and kinda revisit that. On the Aurora side, what I would tell you is, you know, hopefully by the time that they are ready to start doing some of these other buildings, which would cause then the road to come all the way down, what you will see in this first phase is that the road stops right here in this first phase, so all of the traffic will be coming and going from Meredith. Hopefully by the time they're ready to do something down here, we've had some progress with annexation to the west, so that we own all that property and we can start talking about doing something to Aurora that's meaningful, which is in our long-term goal.
Said like a short timer.
Eh.
I, I really hope you're, that's true.
I mean, I think that's everybody's hope.
Yes.
And, and, you know, and realistically, I mean, look, the dominos have started to fall, right? I mean, this is in, Schaefer wants to come in, who knows what'll happen? We're, we're probably very likely in better position now on that particular topic than we were two years ago, so.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're keeping this all top of mind, um, on both Meredith and Aurora. And now I'll shut up.
Well, I don't have too much to say, except I'd like to just make sure that, um, from a stormwater standpoint, you have a great unknown here, in that I imagine there's a lot of ag drainage tile in this property that we don't know where it is. And, um, I'm thinking we wanna make sure that we're encouraging native landscaping, we wanna make sure we're encouraging kind of, um, the more up-to-date way of doing stormwater management, instead of just putting everything into a big pipe. And of course, I think I saw in the specs where ag drainage tile, when they run into it, they're gonna put it into, connect it into a pipe. I, I get that. Um, I'm not sure what language should be in here, but I think we really need to be encouraging uh, as an up-to-date as possible methodology for stormwater management and make sure we don't end up stuck somewhere downstream with a lot of water that has been getting to us in a more casual way, all of a sudden getting it to us at once. And so, I'm not sure exactly what that means in terms of what we do here, but it's not called out at all. It's kind of all standard operating procedure here for stormwater management. And I, I think we've got a big site with a lot of ag, ag drainage tile. There's gonna be a lot of landscaping going in, it's an opportunity. And I'd just like to make sure we do something in there that implies we'd like to be sure we're looking at that, uh, smartly, uh, since this is the time to be think, start thinking about it.
And, and is the intention on some of the future, or some of the following items here to have? Cuz I, I think with the pond being there, there's a lot of volume support, right? And would, would a lot of the site be draining toward that pond, or is it kind of s- various directions?
It, I mean, I think the short answer is it's various directions. And to Pat's point, I mean, engineering, you know, has been involved with this the whole step of the way. We understand this is just the first phase, so we wanted to make sure we take care of what detention requirements are for this first phase. But we're very aware of all the impervious area and stuff that's yet to come, and I, you know, I would just assure you that in every future phase and every site plan, we'll look at that, but we'll also look at it in total to make sure that we're addressing it appropriately. And then, you know, who knows right from a regulatory standpoint, what may change between now and then. We're just gonna make sure that we've always got it covered, and we'll look at every piece as it comes in to make sure we've got it covered, so.
Well, it might be nice to have some language at some point that talks about native landscaping, the Iowa State Stormwater Management Manual stuff, uh, those kinds of things.
Yep.
Just to make sure we're all real clear about, um, because I know we have some limitations on what we can require, but we don't have limitations on what we can encourage.
We do, and I will, I will tell you from the, from this first phase site plan standpoint, you know, that landscaping, I've looked at that, it's very diverse. Uh, a lot of the trees are native, so that's good. And just related but unrelated, our next planning zoning commission, we're taking, uh, some proposed change in the code to require some of our native species trees.
Yeah, I read that.
The shrubs are a lot harder cuz they get a lot bigger, right?
I read that in the meeting minutes, yeah, yeah.
That's coming your way, but yes, we will certainly keep track of that type of thing as well as we get into these future phases and plantings occur. We'll keep all that in mind as well, sure.
Okay.
This is an ancillary question, but can you remind me the anticipated enrollment into this campus?
Six hundred for the high school, right?
Yeah, so initially it'll be six hundred for the high school. Yep, with the ability to expand.
Is, with the, with the initial enrollment being six hundred, is that gonna be like a, an idea of there needs to be more building on that main structure that would support additional students, or like, yeah, there's probably some buffer built in there, but like, is there a peak where you'd like, okay, well, if we hit this, we need to build additional buildings to continue to support that? Or do you think that kind of the main building is gonna support all that population?
So it would not support all of that population, but that's really the intent for the first phase. Um, but then as we look at expansion, it's expansion through additional buildings. Um, and a lot of that will be, uh, driven by, uh, student population and then also by funding and funds available.
So the capacity for that initial high school will be six hundred, or will be, okay.
Yes.
And do you have a rough, uh, anticipated date as to when the high school will be completed and serving students?
Uh, so the intent is that it would be complete in August of twenty seven and servicing students in twenty seven.
And is there a, a, a long-range plan of some kind that, that projects enrollment, say, in ten or fifteen years?
Um, probably not to the, to your liking, but, uh, it was certainly looking at that and looking at what that could potentially, uh, be, but, um, again, a lot of that's driven by, uh, by parents and, uh, as well as what the capacity of the school is from a funding perspective, and if buildings, additional buildings could be funded to be built to allow for added students.
So the, there's, there's not a long-range plan somewhere on a shelf that, that would speak to that?
None that I can share with you tonight. I don't have it.
What would be?
Thank you.
Like what would be the day one enrollment? Cuz then you, you were saying six hundred would be like kinda the peak capacity?
First phase, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, uh, so it's, I think it's about four hundred, four fifty, is that right, Sarah?
Okay.
Four fifty.
Gotcha, so there's some room in there to, okay. Any other items that we wanna discuss before turning it over to the room?
You know, I, I wanna follow up on, on Pat's, uh, question, uh, and this is for you, Steve. When would be the next time that we could weigh in on some of, uh, the concerns that Pat is talking about with the landscaping and, uh, water management?
Probably unknown at this point. Um, you know, as Nate mentioned, you know, this is pretty much tied to fundraising and when they're gonna be able to do, what the next phase might be, and what is that next phase, so.
But is, is there a point in time where, uh, it'll come back to us with, with a more detailed site plan that we can weigh in?
Yes, so again.
I don't need to know an exact date, but that there's a point in time where that would happen.
Absolutely. I mean, the, the, the short way to answer the question, I think, Joe, is, is tonight, should you approve this rezoning? Here, down the agenda, we can talk again about this high school, so that's this phase, which is only this building, and again, it's this parking lot, this parking lot, this parking lot, which I'll show you, and that's in the site plan. And then the road stops right here, and then you've got this facility down in this corner, and that's it. Anything else in addition to those is gonna require a plat, because they're in outlots, and outlots are not buildable, and a site plan to go with it. So yeah, any, any future development of any kind, other than these two buildings, will be coming to you, yes.
Excellent, thanks.
Yes.
All right. Uh, this is a public hearing, so is anybody in the audience here would like to speak on the topic for or against? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Motion by Bodie.
I'll second.
Second by Katch Dory. Any discussion? Please vote.
I believe we are back online.
Oh, we're back? Oh, we're back, oh, sweet. All right, that passes. Uh, we have two items for consideration.
Move the amendment to the comprehensive plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Kachatori. Any discussion, please vote. That passes.
Uh, motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Kroll, second by Kachatori. Any discussion, please vote.
And this is where I have added the language that you discussed.
Excellent.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and that passes. And so this was seven, is this seven-two? Okay, so seven-two, all right, so we're on to seven-three. Thank you for discussing with us and, and going through this, we appreciate it. Um, seven point three is a public hearing on the Urbandale Marketplace, uh Lot Two, Plat Two, amendment to the Plan Unit Development Master Plan at ten nine five zero Plum Drive. Notice for this item was published on October ten, twenty twenty-five in the Des Moines Register. I would ask the clerk if there are any objections to this notice is published?
There were none.
Ask a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. Any discussion, please vote.
I apologize, I spoke too soon, may I do?
Do it by voice.
Uh, Kroll, yes. Bodie?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes. That passes, uh, so, all right. So we're in seven point three. We are open to public hearing. Okay, so, Steve, back to you.
Thankfully, I think this one is much simpler and much less involved. Uh, this is the parcel on the screen, it's the parcel, um, just over four acres between the Home Depot and the Target. And this is frankly pretty simple, this is just a, a request to amend the PUD to allow, uh, and in this case, we have a specific user, should you approve this, I'll show you the site plan here in a few minutes. It's for an auto zone uh to go on this parcel. Uh, and I, I think this is great because it's a little bit of a difficult parcel. There's a storm sewer kind of running through it, so it's kind of a difficult parcel, been sitting there for a while. Uh, and to get an auto zone on there, I think is really good. And when I show you the landscape plan, you'll be blown away, I mean, it's really planted very nicely. So I think it's a nice compliment uh to what's there and would be a good use of the property. So Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend approval and be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Steve?
So my only question, and I'm looking at Bridgette, is there going to finally be a road that connects Target to Home Depot?
The answer is yes.
Yay! That's my only question. Beat me to it.
All right, uh, we are at public hearing, is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak for or against this item? All right, hearing none, uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. Any discussion, please vote.
Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, uh, there's one item for consideration.
I'll move approval of Urbandale Marketplace Lot Two, Plat Two, amendment to the Plan Unit Development Master Plan.
And I'll second that.
Motion by Carberry Montgomery, second by Kroll. Any discussion, please vote.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that passes. Uh, moving on to item seven point four, this is a public hearing for the development agreement with MP South LLC at ten one hundred Plum Drive. Uh, notice for this item was published on October ten, twenty twenty-five in the Des Moines Register. I would ask the clerk if there were any objections to this notice is published?
There were none.
Uh, ask for a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Kroll. Any discussion, please vote.
Bodie?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes. And that passes, going to turn it over to Erin.
Great, thank you, Mayor and Council, Erin Young with the Economic Development Department. Uh, here to present you uh with the development agreement here for uh the one thousand and one uh Plum Drive um location. So here's the map for you, I got the interstate just on the top, so you can see it's the Hundred Street Interchange. Um, and then uh here on the south parcel, south of Plum, across from um the Donut Lovers, Donut Land. Uh, if you don't like them, then go to Quick Star, so you can get your donut fix here in this location. So um that, that is the location there. Um, you know, this is a development agreement with MP South, that's an entity controlled by Temple Real Estate. Uh, Dylan Temple is here uh tonight, should you have any questions of them? Uh, this is for the first building, uh, on that south parcel, you did approve of PUD uh a year or so ago for the three-building development on this. Uh, this is for the nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square foot building uh along Plum Drive. Uh, the estimated cost of the construction of the building is two point eight million dollars and kind of the, the estimates for the valuation of the building after construction. Um, new headquarters, that is not correct, that's from the last one, sorry about that. Uh, and this is, uh, the requirements is to have job crea, positive job creation in the building from qualifying tenants. And a qualifying tenant, we've, we've mentioned at the last meeting was, is commercial, non-retail tenants. So a restaurant would be retail, um, a real, realtor shop would be retail, um, a medical office use, that would be qualifying, non-retail. Uh, to, to give you some examples for that, so uh we, this, this is the five-year standard TIF rebate uh policy that we have in the Northwest Market Urban Renewal area. So seventy-five, sixty, forty-five, thirty, fifteen is the, the decreasing rebate schedule for that. Uh, in the development agreement is a commitment to complete by the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, the estimates as to the value of those TIF rebates uh is ninety-one thousand dollars over the five years. Uh, that's based on the two point eight million dollar building valuation and then an assumption of fifty percent of this building would be either qualified tenants or non-qualified tenants uh with that. So uh that we would check on that on the annual certifications that we do with these development agreements. Short and sweet.
So you're still anticipating some retail, commercial, restaurant, neighborhood usage here? I mean, I guess that's what I was really excited about this project and so, I mean, I love job creation and all that too, but.
Right. Yes, to, to that point, and this is one of those kind of a, it's kind of flex commercial is a poor way of saying it, but
Yeah.
it's similar to the north side, um, both of those, the, the two main buildings that are the inline uh commercial buildings, you know, they do have retailers more towards the street and then DeMoss took the, the north building. So it is the same structure, uh, two different buildings, but you're able to accommodate lots of different users with this kind of flexible product on the commercial side. So it's what people are expecting, it's great visibility, good signage, good parking. Um, it's kind of a winning solution uh in this neck of the woods and.
And we had a lot of concern when we were going through the land process with the neighbors across the street. Is everything all, all good with that? I mean, this didn't trigger any notices or anything. Okay, so that all got resolved uh back when we did this uh lan, planning part of it?
I think so.
Okay.
There's a lot of good landscaping on it as part of the site plan, so.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And this, uh, it seemed like it was all single-story, there's no, there's not going to be like regular roof access and things like that too, like, because I think some of the conceptual drawings, there was like kind of second story, like seating or?
Not for this building, no.
Okay, gotcha.
Wasn't there a patio, like a rooftop patio or something?
There's three total buildings and one of them did have possibility of having something on the second floor.
Gotcha. All right, any other questions? All right, we are in public hearing on this, is any, there's, there anybody here uh tonight that wishes to speak for or against this item? Making us all wait in suspense, all right. Uh, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Carberry Montgomery. Any discussion, please vote.
You may be able to, we may be back.
Yeah.
I got mine.
For the moment.
All right, that passes, uh, there's one item for consideration.
Move approval, council letter eight three one seven.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. If there's any discussion, otherwise, please vote. And that passes, all right, that concludes our public hearings. Uh, moving on to section eight, uh, item eight point one is to establish a public hearing for the right-of-way vacation and conveyance of Lot B, The Meadows, Plat One at eighty-seven twenty-four Meredith Drive. Steve, any, just taking questions? All right, any questions for Steve on this one? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion.
Move resolution two twen, two twenty-one dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Kachatori. Any discussion, otherwise, please vote.
Bodie?
Here, I mean, yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that item passes. Uh, moving on to eight, item eight point two, to establish a public hearing for the vacation of a portion of an easement for sanitary sewer right-of-way, Lot Two, The Loop at Plum Drive. That's ten five hundred Plum Drive. Any questions for Steve, otherwise I'd ask for a motion?
Move approval, council letter eight three zero seven.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Kachatori. Any discussion, otherwise, please vote.
Kroll?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that item passes. Uh, we're now into planning and zoning items. Item nine point one, the Des Moines Christian School, Plat One, preliminary plat. Uh, Steve?
Okay, so I'm going to show you nine one and nine two, nine one's the preliminary plat, nine two's the final plat. And then you can just make a motion on each, obviously directly related, same property involved. This is the preliminary plat. Uh, and again, this just kind of shows you what this first phase is going to be, it's in the dark. Uh, so you've got the road coming in off of Meredith, kind of comes down to this point right here. Uh, you've got, this isn't the site plan, the site plan for the high school will show all this too, but this is just preliminary plat. Preliminary plats show uh topography, show a little bit more detail than the final plat does. Uh, but just wanted to point out, this is the building right there with the high school that's part of that first phase. Uh, and then the final plat is just the lots themselves, much simpler. Uh, Lot One is this lot here and that's the access road coming in. The high school will be down here and so that's the buildable lot for the high school. Lot Two is the lot down here in the southwest corner for the Early Education Center. And then you can see there are two large outlots, Outlet X, Outlet Y. So all of those other buildings that were on that master plan, in addition to the high school and the Early Education Center, portions of those lots at the appropriate time in the future, they'll come back in with final plats for those uh and the accompanying site plans and you'll get to be able to see those, so. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the preliminary plat and the final plat, subject to those conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for Steve on this one? I was curious on page four of the council letter, there's like a large dotted line that goes up, up, all by, all by, like all the way up to the baseball field and then back down. Um, I didn't know what that indicated.
On the preliminary plat or the final?
Uh, on the preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat on page four?
Yep, there, the previous, uh, previous tab that you were, or page that you were on.
Whoops.
That one, yeah. There's, yeah, there's just that big dotted line up and down. I, I didn't know what that really meant.
James, what is that, do you know off the top of your? Oh, yeah, 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 I think that's right, yep.
Gotcha, so grading generally will be across the whole site, except for that section?
Except for what's down in this corner.
Okay.
Right.
Gotcha.
And that's happening right now already, isn't it?
Correct, yeah, we did, they do have permission to grade only at this point. And there was, you know, some time involved in doing that just because it's such a big area. So they are out there grading, stripping the top soil and you can see that being stored, yeah.
Gotcha. Uh, if there are no other questions, I ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Kachatori?
Second.
Second by Kroll. Any discussion, please vote.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
That passes. Uh, moving on to item nine point two, Des Moines Christian School, Plat One, final plat. Any other questions for Steve?
Move approval, council letter eight three two two.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. Any discussion, please vote.
Kroll?
Yes.
Bodie?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Kachatori?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Uh, then moving to item nine point three, Des Moines Christian School, Meredith Drive Campus Phase One Site Plan.
So this is the high school that we've discussed, kind of in the middle of the site. Uh, again, here, these are the architectural renderings. Um, three different parking lots uh that we looked at, there's a total of seven hundred and ninety-seven parking spaces in the three separate parking lots. Uh, two stories that you can see here. Um, it's about a hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet total. And then, of course, you're going to have your various classrooms, the gym, the fine art space, cafeteria, kitchen, all the things that would typically come with that for an ultimate capacity of six hundred students, like we discussed. Building's generally about thirty-two feet tall. Uh, it does get up to about forty feet tall at the entrance here that you can see. Uh, gets a little bit taller at those entrance features. Um, building materials, as we discussed on this, is precast concrete and then they've got form liners to kind of make this look like stone and, and just kind of give it some depth and some texture. Uh, and again, this is sitting so far away from Meredith and from, and from Aurora that you wouldn't really be even able to make out that detail as well. Lots of glass uh involved and then, of course, there's all kinds of walkways that are going to connect the different buildings and different phases. Um, really nicely done, uh, in our opinion, lots of landscaping. Planning and Zoning Commission does recommend approval, subject to the items noted that are in there and would be happy to answer questions.
Is that kind of a mix of like a first and second floor being like classrooms on both? Or is there kind of like a designation of like, we're going to have classrooms here and like more kind of auxiliary uses on a different floor?
Two-story volume and then a lot of the gymnasium that take up the higher volume are um the other side.
Gotcha. There's kind of a plan view off to the side of, of like the classroom wing that she's talking about.
Oh, I see.
Can you make that way bigger?
What's that?
Can you blow up that little thing?
Yeah, I can, and actually, let me, what did I? Let me do it this way, hang on a second. I'll go back and get it. I don't ever want this many items again, it's hard to keep track of. Okay, here we go.
This is why we moved the meeting back to five thirty, just for you.
Thank you. So there we go, Bridgette, how is that, is that?
Well, the other thing had words on it, like what the wings were, didn't it?
Um, no, I don't think it did, I think it was just kind of an overhead graphic. And then there, it does get, there's an enlargement here a little bit, so. If you really wanted Sarah to come back up and kind of walk you through.
No, I just thought it had words on it, so that was going to be interesting.
You know, there's, huh, yeah, right, right, that, that was the key for their, for their drawings, but
Okay.
There's kind of, and actually here, let me go back to this one, where's the overall? There we go, let me. Let me do that, and let me enlarge this. Here we go. How about that? So you're coming in off of Meredith at the top, got this parking lot, this parking lot, this parking lot, the road will come down to this point. And then here is the building itself.
Out of curiosity, do we anticipate one of these parking lots to be designated for staff versus students?
I don't know. Are you that far in the weeds? Again, you're looking at basically eight-hundred parking spaces, so. At some point, they'll figure out who parks where, but.
Yeah. It won't, it won't take long for eight-hundred parking spots to be filled.
Right.
One, one thing that I was curious about with all the glass, I, this is a, this is a product of just me reading articles. With that much glass on a building, has there been consideration on, like, ways to prevent bird strikes or reduce bird strikes on a building, on the building of that size? I'm just curious.
They, you really, they want you to come back up.
I apologize.
I worry more about the safety protection of the glass, so it doesn't shatter, but. Yeah, I, I have not.
Right.
I have not looked into the bird strike, so I don't have an answer for that one yet.
Yeah. No, I, I had read an article that was, was talking about, you know, like, there's a significant amount of bird strikes that happen on buildings that have a lot amount of glass, and there's certain coatings or.
There's been a lot of hubbub with the Vikings Stadium, I know, up in the Twin Cities.
Yeah.
But that's just so much glass, right?
Right, yeah. Cause we're putting up, you know, we're putting up a building in the middle of somewhere that hasn't had a building, and so, yeah. That may just be something to consider as you're going through the process. Any other items wanna discuss? Alright, do we have a motion?
Move approval Council Letter eight three one-nine.
Second.
Motion by Kroll, second by Bodie. Any discussion? Otherwise, please vote.
Did that come through?
Yes, it did. We'll say it was a very compelling article to read about bird strikes. There's a lot of birds that die by windows.
Noted.
Alright, that item passes.
We have a lunch and learn on that, David.
Sort of chicken?
Moving to item nine point four, Des Moines Christian School, Meredith Drive Campus Early Education Center.
Okay, the last Des Moines Christian item. So this is Early Education Center. You saw the elevations, can go back to those if you want. This is Aurora down here at the bottom. This is a four-and-a-half acre parcel down in that southwest corner of the overall property. So this lines up with the street immediately to the south, so that's a full-access location there. This would be right in, right out. Plenty of parking spaces for what code would require for this, eighty-five total, sixty is all that would be required. And then here is the building itself with the gym kinda in the back part of it, back in the back. I think one of you had a question, just how's the gym gonna be used? And I provided that answer, you know, during the day, this, this is essentially daycare, they're separated by ages. There's one room in here where it's a half-day preschool, and the rest of it is, is daycare. During the day, when those things are going on, they will use, they will be the users of the gym. In off-hours, it is certainly possible that other activities affiliated with Des Moines Christian would use this space, and they would have access in and out, and then we've told them, you know, we wanna make sure, particularly from the public safety point of view, that anything that happens in here can be supported by the spaces that are in this parking lot, so that people aren't parking in the neighborhood or in drive aisles or things like that, so. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval of this item, subject to those conditions, and would be happy to answer questions.
What is our anticipated enrollment in this space? Great, thank you.
And there's like bus parking there, I think, too. Is that like the idea that buses would go out and pick up students to bring? Or is that more of like kind of general school bus parking?
Yeah.
Probably a temporary situation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. Do we have a motion? Or any other questions?
Just because I'm blind, real quick, can you tell me how many rooms there are for those hundred-and-eighty students?
What is it, six or seven?
Classrooms.
Yeah, 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 I had that in the report. I think it's, it's nine classrooms for, and then the one that's the, that's the preschool, yeah.
And we're looking at ages?
Yes.
Of two and a half?
Starting at two, yep, two to.
Yep.
Is that, is that the current kinda setup you guys have on-site today? It just would be relocating out to here?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Good to know.
And the estimated opening would be the same?
This one's much sooner. August of twenty-six, yep. And this, this is a good example of how fluid the project in total is, cause they will all admit, when we first started talking to them, like, this was gonna be, yeah, we might do that later, and now all of a sudden, it's, oh, yeah, we're doing it, and we're doing it now, so.
I move council letter eighty-three twenty.
I'll second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Cacciatore. Any discussion? Otherwise, please vote.
I apologize, we're back to a voice vote. Bodie?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
That item passes. Thank you for bearing with us. We appreciate all the discussion. Alright, item nine point five is the Autozone Site Plan. Steve, take it away.
Okay, so we considered the amendment to allow this a little while ago, and so this is the site plan for it, and I wanted to, to show you the actual landscape plan. I've got the other ones if you wanna see it, but, so this is Plum Drive along the curve, so you got Home Depot over here, you've got Target down here. You can see the connections, Amy, right there. There's a connection that goes over into Home Depot, you come down here, and there's the connection that goes into Target down there. The store would be located in this location here on the property with the main access off of Plum Drive. At this location, their main entrance would be down here in this corner, and then just lots of landscaping on here to really kinda soften the look and, and kinda correspond with, this is a particular PUD where it does require a long Plum Drive, not only the berming, but also some plantings of trees and shrubs, so they will continue that as Target and Home Depot both did. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval, subject to items noted. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is Plum Drive divided there at the entrance?
Uh, yeah, well, I mean.
I mean, does it, would you be able to left or do a full access?
There is an island there. I, yes, yes, there is an island there.
Okay, so people would have to get in through Target or Home Depot if they're coming the wrong way.
That's, and that's part of why we connected, just to.
Yep.
Be able to provide that access. So yes, you can come from Home Depot, you can come from Target, or you can do this main entrance here.
But only if you're going.
Right.
North.
Right.
East.
Nor, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's north in my head, whatever.
Basically, basically east, northeast, which turns the east.
Well, I'm excited to finally see something going in this spot, cause more than one time I have attempted to drive from Target to Home Depot and been unsuccessful. I probably shouldn't say that out loud, but it keeps looking like it should be able to happen, and now it will.
And we've had several people look at this lot, but it's just, you know, it's kind of a funky shape, and you've got an easement going through the middle of it, and it's just been kind of a difficult site, but it, it works great for what they wanna do, and they have told us, Autozone has told us this is gonna be kinda more of a regional type of center. So, and given where it is off the interstate and everything, I think it's a good use, so.
Move council letter eighty-three twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Carberry Montgomery. Any discussion? Otherwise, please vote.
Bodie?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Alright, that passes. Moving on to item nine point six, the Bentley Ridge West Preliminary Platte.
Okay, for a warning, after this item, I'm sitting down, and I will not come back up for this.
That's fine.
Okay. Preliminary plat here, as we continue to grow out west, this is the remaining portion of this development. It's about seventy-six acres of the overall total that was approved back in twenty-twenty-one for the rezoning. This is the area of the development that goes all the way out to a hundred-and-eighty-fourth, which is currently our corporate limits. Planning to do it in two phases. You can see the red line here, so Phase One is gonna be adjacent to the previous plat for this development, so they'll kinda do that first, and then Phase Two would be this last piece that goes out to a hundred-and-eighty-fourth. There are three different outlots. You can see here, here in the north, and here in the northwest corner, which will be stormwater detention, and then Outlet Z is a park, parkland. There is a trail planned to go through here, and you can see the dash line for that, which would kinda come through here. And then, just so you know, we have a meeting the end of next week with the people that are looking to the parcel immediately to the south of this, which is interesting. They've got some mixed uses in there, and they've got a section of parkland, and we hope when that comes online, we'd be able to take this trail down through this property and then tie into that park that's down there as part of that property. So, a total of a hundred-and-fifty-one more single-family lots. Planning and zoning commission does recommend approval, subject to items noted. Would be happy to answer questions.
Bridget, you looked like you had a question.
Well, no, you just, and when you started talking about the land to the south having mixed uses, that is mind-blowing.
Kinda is.
How far north is Northview Drive from Meredith?
I don't know what the exact number of feet would be. Uh, it's gotta be, it's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of a little more than a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
Is that close enough?
Yeah, yeah, I just.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
I can't wait to hear about your meeting.
Yeah, it's, actually, it's, it's a group that's been looking at that property, used to be called the Hilton Property, but it's been purchased at this point. They've been looking at it for four years. It's part of the same development group that was doing all of the Mallard Prairie stuff and the, and all that stuff just to the south of this, and so I think they were kinda concentrating their efforts on getting a lot of those lots going, and now they're ready to maybe take a look at this, so, but, yeah.
Well, as, as we know, traffic patterns have dramatically changed over where Des Moines Christian is building, but they have dramatically changed on this portion of Meredith, as everyone that doesn't go to Des Moines Christian goes west to the Waukees Schools.
Yes, they do.
So, it's.
And now I drive that, so I know.
I know. It is, I mean, I was just driving through it today, and, I mean, I hope to see us working with Clive soon-ish to work on widening that area, cause it's.
It frankly is amazing. Ten years ago, if you'd have told me that we were doing lots out in some of the parts of our western limits where we're doing them now, I would not have thought we'd have been there yet, but we are, so. But that's good, that means people wanna be in Urbandale, so.
Do they know they're in Urbandale?
That might be a good question.
I think that's a later agenda item.
Yes, to that point, stay tuned for a moment.
Right.
Ten point one.
Annika will come up and tell you more.
Yeah.
Any other questions for this item?
Move council letter eighty-three twenty-five.
Second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Carberry Montgomery. Any discussion? Otherwise, please vote, or voice vote.
Bodie?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, we are through planning and zoning items. Moving on to regular agenda, we have ten point one, which is professional service agreements for, I didn't practice, Van Skyak, Skyak?
Sure.
Associates? David and/or Annika?
Can answer questions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if there are questions, yeah.
We plan for questions only, but I'm happy to answer whatever you've got.
Oh, okay, yeah. No, it sounds, it sounds like they have pretty good experience in terms of postal issues and good relationships with the teams that are.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very large DC lobbying group. They have extensive experience with municipalities and miraculously have some experience with postal lobbying, so that's why they were selected by the group.
Excellent. And you said it was twelve, the twelve communities?
It'll be at least eleven, probably twelve, maybe thirteen. You gotta get everybody in line by November one, so.
Right.
The, but the base bargain is, must be eleven. What that means, our, our thousand dollars a month goes a long way, because it's being matched by at least ten other communities.
Yeah, absolutely.
David, when this is like finalized by the other communities, can you let us know, like, who's part of?
Sure, who the final.
Yeah, like, who is in our coalition?
We can. We'd be happy to do that. Right now, the bigger issue is, will there be a government to lobby?
Right.
In the near future, so.
Would you like to expand on that? No. I mean, at least they're not located in the east wing of the White House.
The coalition have a, like a board of directors or.
Sorry, I'm gonna put that in there.
Yeah, working group. They don't have a, they do have a working group, yes, and we've, and Annika's done a lot of the heavy lifting on, on the work group. But myself and Curtis and the mayor have also been on a number of the calls, there've been a significant number of meetings. I think the next one, maybe tomorrow, or the next day, there's another meeting coming up. We, we had some, obviously some say in, in hiring this particular firm.
Yeah, we, we reviewed the request for proposal, and then a, a smaller committee of communities, representatives from various communities, actually did the selection process. I believe there were eleven firms that applied. Seven were qualified, and the group is very satisfied with this application.
Excellent.
And the amount of, like, you know, if there are fifteen communities or something that end on, get, end up getting signed on, like, we're, we're committed to the up to a thousand.
It'll be a thousand, no matter what. It's just, it's a flat thousand from every participating community, as, as long as at least eleven are part of the.
At least eleven, okay. But is that, cause it's, it's basically however much is billed, right? Cause that's kinda what I was saying.
My understanding is, this is a thousand dollars of work every month.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yep.
And as far as federal lobbyist work goes, that's affordable, I mean, reasonable, I guess it's a better word.
I don't know that we would be able to afford any level of lobbying at this price if we were not part of a coalition of cities.
I think that's fair. And this basically guarantees that any legislation they're lobbying for, whoever's in on the lobbying effort is included in that legislation, like, that they are lobbying, right? Government might go rogue, but.
So that's, it was one of the reasons that we each have an individual agreement with the lobbyists, is they are then required to lobby on, in the interest of the city of Urbandale. The particulars of this legislative scenario are a little complex. There are two bills listed. Each city is only on one of the two bills, but both bills essentially will have to move together. We know that based on the dynamics of the senators and what they're interested in, so, yes.
Gotcha.
But it's not, it's not the most straightforward, but it is in the interest of each individual community that signs on that is part of the base plan and the understanding.
Gotcha.
Move council letter eighty-three fourteen.
I'll second.
Motion by Bodie, second by Cacciatore. Any discussion? Please vote.
Bodie?
Yes.
Cacciatore?
Yes.
Carberry Montgomery?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Rosendahl?
Yes.
Alright, that passes. That concludes our regular agenda items, so I'll ask David if he has anything.
I don't have anything tonight, other than just to remind you that we'll be seeing each other sooner than normal, because our next council meeting is on Monday, November third, and this is Wednesday, so we have a week and a half between council meetings, which is a little unusual.
Are you gonna be pulling weeds with us tomorrow?
I have some other commitments that I have to be at tomorrow, but I will be offering moral support for you.
Alright, sweet. Amy, go ahead and start us off.
Um, just to draw your attention, we did have a human services committee meeting where we started to list out and make recommendations for the council to look at. Don't get too excited, we only got through fiscal recommendations, not policy recommendations, so more to come, but I just wanna draw your. more to come, but I just want to draw your attention to, uh, that in the consent agenda. Um, also, we had a MAC meeting last Tuesday where we had significant conversation around e-scooters and e-bikes with the fake pedals, so, that are more combustible engines and can, or gas engines and can go up to sixty miles an hour. Um, so you're gonna see Clive, or not Clive, West Des Moines and Waki have put out videos and/or informational pieces on those devices, um, urging parents not to buy them, um, urging people to wear helmets, et cetera, et cetera, so you're also gonna see some, uh, media outlets have picked that up as well, so there's some stories. I encourage folks, share those out, um, and, uh, I think that's something that we need to probably work as a collective in the region to really think through, since all of our bike paths are integrated, streets are integrated, et cetera. Um, so, more to come on that, but I, I just want to bring that all to your attentions.
David, could we, if, I don't, I've watched the Waki video, and I don't think it's really Waki-specific, could we share that on our channels if, um, I mean, obviously, have Derek watch it and, you know, before it just gets, but I think it'd be, he left, uh, a little too early.
Yeah, we.
But I think it would be appropriate for us, I mean, they are, I mean, I don't know.
Your area is terrible.
They, they are, I have had some very near misses.
Same.
Same, and I think our, our, uh, I think the police chiefs group is actually working, um, working on some research and recommendations too, to help support the MAC discussion that's coming up, um, but yeah, the, the, yeah, I mean, anything, anything north of twenty miles an hour on a, I mean, it's.
Even twenty's too high.
It's crazy, it's frightening, but.
Yeah, they've been zipping by.
And kids don't have any fear.
Or, or even realizing they're going that fast, no concept.
Well, and no communication, which is a huge problem.
Amy, I had a question about the human services, um, I, not like the weeds, like I got with you yesterday, but.
Thank you.
How will those come to us, and maybe it's more of a David question, will those come through us through the budget process?
Right, well, there's two, there's two sets of recommendations, as Amy mentioned, the, the ones, the, the only thing they got to from a time constraint standpoint was the, basically, the financial, the fiscal, um, we have questions on that, we haven't had a chance yet, but we will be reaching out to that group to get more information on, on that rec, that recommendation. Um, the policy recommendations can come, um, really anytime, but we had encouraged the group to, um, you know, get to a good point in its work, so that we, so that any recommendations that had financial considerations could be considered either in a budget process or a capital process, which we're getting ready to start both. So they will be considered. One of the things that, in the conversations with the group, that we promised them, of course, we would do this, uh, without having the conversation, but that everything, all of the, you know, all of the minutes, all of the discussions, all of the ideas would be coming to the council unfiltered, but that their recommendation for each of those things would be considered by management, go through the, either the budget process, the CIP process, or a policy review, uh, and some things we've actually already incorporated, uh, into our, kind of our operating procedure and advanced, uh, so there will be more to come. The, the one rec, the recommendation that we got to in the, uh, committee meeting, we do have some follow-up questions, just to try to learn more about, you know, the, the specifics of it, so, stay tuned.
Questions about the transportation study, but that's what Amy and I were talking about.
And, and I think that is one that is definitely not nearly fleshed out at all, so.
There was a lot of discussion because of where DART was and its process, I don't know that they were really in a position to maybe finish their work, but I don't want to speak for them either.
Okay, I think that's fair. Um, and then I'm looking forward to the Urbendale Uplift Project and Chunker Treat tomorrow, it's gonna be a busy day, and then the mushroom unveiling next week. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, thanks, uh, attended a downtown event, the Black Party.
Oh, yes, that was great.
Yeah, it was, it was fantastic, uh, kudos to the staff and, and all the folks who put that together, it, it exceeded expectations. And, uh, I think it bodes well for the potential we have for our downtown. I did attend the Everbrook Academy Ribbon Cutting in Dallas County, and, uh, that was a successful event, well-attended. And the other thing I'm, I'm thinking about, and I know we're all following, um, the, uh, the press reports about, uh, meetings taking place at the state level regarding property tax reform, and, uh, you know, I, I guess I'm a little disappointed that, that a meeting occurred in Dallas County that our leadership, uh, wasn't invited to, but, but I understand that, that, uh, David, that you've got some, uh, some meetings, uh, scheduled to discuss that, that topic with, uh, some folks.
It's my very favorite subject matter to discuss, since about October of twenty-eleven, when I moved to Iowa.
Well, I, well, I, yes, I can tell, um, you know, I'm just, uh, I, yeah, there's a certain level of anxiety because it seems to me that it's sort of inevitable that we're gonna see, you know, we're gonna have to, uh, to make some cuts and reduce services, and I think, I think our residents ought to be aware that that's what's coming down the pike, and it's not our, it's not necessarily something that we, um, would champion, although everyone wants to, you know, certainly I don't want to raise property taxes, it'd be great to reduce property taxes. We did a little bit of that this year, uh, I think we reduced it by, what, five cents per thousand-dollar valuation. And so I, and I think a lot of communities are, are already doing a good job of, of creating efficiencies, and, uh, I just want to go on record as saying that, you know, if, if it's a top-down ki, kind of, uh, approach, I don't think our residents can be very happy with it, and I think we're gonna have to start thinking about exactly, um, you know, what kinds of things we're gonna be able to do to, to comply with, with whatever they do, and whatever they do is probably not gonna be something that, that we're gonna, you know, think really highly of, I, it, it's too early to tell, but I, I, from, from what I'm, I'm gathering in the press reports, it's gonna be, it looks like they want to do something fairly draconian, so.
One, one thing I am encouraged by, uh, sincerely, is the, um, the leaderships, the new leaderships indicated a willingness to have conversations, and I've heard there's interest in, you know, getting out into the communities and talking more.
Oh, good.
Um, and I, I think, you know, that, we, we've been very fortunate, I would say, even, even last year and the year before, we've been very fortunate to have, um, a, a captive audience with leadership, and, and we've had really good conversations, um, but I think, particularly in the house and way, uh, house, uh, ways and means on the house side, uh, there's some indication of really trying to get more information and learn more, and I think, uh, I'm encouraged by that. So, I'm always, I always go into every session optimistic.
That's good to hear, I, you know, that's, that's great news, and, and if anyone out there is, uh, is listening, you know, I, we would be grateful to have a seat at the table and, and, you know, have, uh, our, our views aired and, and considered, so, that's all I've got.
Bridget?
Um, I, I think you all got the email from DART, uh, with a lot of information in it, um, so we have three big things that are going on right now, and a lot of other things going on, obviously. Um, the biggest thing is the network redesign, which I think you all attended the meetings, um, I think it's very beneficial to service levels in Urbendale, actually, we're going from one percent of the service hours in the entire network to over three percent, um, so, we are, um, gonna see a substantial increase, um, in service, so, Pat asked, I said, let me know if you have any questions, and then Pat's like, well, do you have any problems with it, which was like a really good question, I thought. So I don't have any concerns with what is being presented. West Des Moines, uh, had some concerns about a route that kind of runs along, um, like by the library and the LRC, um, cause there's a whole portion of West Des Moines that's not, um, that's losing service, and, um, so they're still trying to tweak that. Um, but I think Urbendale on the whole is really gaining, um.
Thank you for your work on that, by the way.
It is never-ending, and, uh, still more to come, but, um, the other thi, two things are changes to the funding tiers, the funding formula, which is incredibly complicated, but, you know, Des Moines pays a certain percentage, and then the other communities pay half of their rate based on population, and then half based on a very complicated formula of hours of, well, no, not of hours of service, but like, uh, tiers of service. If you have seven-day-a-week service, if you have primarily express service, if you have primarily five-day-a-week service, or if you have very limited service, you're in different tiers. So now we are transitioning, hopefully, to one that is based on this percentage of hours of service. So Urbendale goes in, West Des Moines will be in tier one, Urbendale will be in tier two, along with, um, Clive, Windsor Heights, um, like the central, uh, Altoona, I think, maybe Ankeny, um, the central core suburbs, I think, to get, that have frequent service, but we're getting a significant increase in service, so I don't know, we don't know exactly what our rate changes are gonna be as this gets implemented, but they're gonna get back to us on that, and then we are also working on a paratransit-only option that would be at this point available to Pleasant Hill, who has already indicated a, a desire to leave DART. Um, there is sufficient time for them to make a decision by the end of the year to stay in with this paratransit-only option, where they would pay likely like a ten-cent levy rate, and then, as like a buy-in, and then a hundred, cover a hundred percent of cost of their rides for their residents. And then that would allow, you know, for Pleasant Hill, you know, people from East Des Moines that are going into Hy-Vee or doctor's appointments to still go take paratransit into Pleasant Hill. And so Pleasant Hill, and then Bondurant is also contemplating leaving DART, so this would be an option to keep them in. And so those decisions need to be made, um, one is by the end of the year, and one is like by January fifteenth, and of course, you know, we have transitions on city councils right now, and so there's just a lot of, continuing to be lots of questions um, that need to be, um, answered, but I think it's a good way to keep our coalition of willing communities as big as possible for the time being. I wonder, I mean, at some point, maybe we could discuss DART going back into Grimes, um, if this would have been an option, I don't know if they would have stayed, but, um, and Amanda is gonna want to come talk to us probably in January, um, I'm sure she'll be reaching out to you, David. I suggested January, cause she had like, if you have November, December, you, we have this information, we can talk about, if you go January, February, we can add on these things, so, uh, January is what I thought would be best for us. Um, I'm really sorry to have missed the downtown Urbendale event, I did watch a Facebook Live, a little bit of it, and it looked fantastic, and I look forward, Curtis, to more of them. I know you thought it was a one-off.
Nope.
And then, um, maybe you have the answer to this, Curtis, cause everyone else has left, is there a speaking portion of the lunch tomorrow? Like where Bob is doing a, yes?
So, um, we will talk to Erin and get it know-it-out.
Yes, can you like just text us?
You just, you want to know timing?
Yeah, like, I would, it starts at eleven, it's eleven to one, and I have stuff in the morning, and it, Bob's speaking at noon, I, I'll, I'd like to be there at noon. And not necessarily at eleven, so.
Do you want to make sure you get, like, some food trucks?
Yes, yes, I'm all excited, very excited about the food truck and the desserts from Palmer's, so.
I think, like we do, we'll route it through Nicole, that's the best spot to keep all the calendar information.
Yeah, no, that'd be great if we could just, if there's a, I don't, I think Bob had a Waka song, or some, something, I have, I can't remember, but, um, I think, I think that's it.
Um, Walnut Creek Watershed Management Authority had a meeting Monday afternoon, it really turned out to be pretty good, um, they went around the room, we were kind of all talking about what we were doing, but, um, ended up with a conversation that was really sort of focused on the soil quality restoration piece, and, uh, what different different communities are doing in that regard, and Clive is doing sort of a batch-and-build version of that, and has volunteered to provide all those materials to us if we so choose to go that pathway, and, um, Mike Duncan was there and was also interested in that. So I, I think it's something to look at, um, our urban conservationist, Jennifer Welch, despite the fact that, um, you know, she's having to work out of the public works building now, and you can't email her at her, well, you can email her, but it has to get, uh, moved to her house, I guess, or something, I don't know. Uh, she does say that the water quality, uh, initiative pre-apps are due before Thanksgiving, and we need to look at this, and we probably already are, but we should make sure that we are, because I was unclear on the level of funding available through some of that. Some of these are two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of match, um, or more perhaps, so these are maybe significant projects. We may have well secured those funds for past, um, stream restoration projects, I just don't know. But, uh, it's something we need to make sure we are looking into, and it sounds like the pre-app process is pretty simple. Uh, so it would be worth, and she's maintaining that the money is there and available, kind of, no matter what happens with the shutdown. Or at least, that's the way I interpreted what she had to say, which is the only fair way to express that, cause I could be wrong. Anyway, it was a good meeting, and I do have some, uh, soil quality restoration materials that Jennifer Welch brought that we might want to have some interest in, um, looking at. And then, uh, I also wanted to mention the Black Party, um, I thought that was one of the most amazing things we've ever done. I, I can't say enough about it, that was a pop-up to beat all pop-ups, uh, and I, I just think it really demonstrated in a very powerful way, the potential and the desire on the part of our community to do something of substance there. That was so cool. And then I'd like you all to know that when I mentioned to, uh, Jack, my grandson, that he would probably be coming to the food trucks and then helping me weed, he said, but will there be bouncy houses? So we've definitely done a good job with our party in the parks, because he has a level of expectation for any event we attend. So there you go.
Can I add one thing? Um, I was supposed to have surgery last week, it got canceled because of a little scratch on my foot. I'm supposed to have surgery now, next Tuesday, pending healing of the scratch on my foot, so I will miss, uh, the, um, mushroom unveiling. But I was at the Walker Johnston, uh, work session last week and had Scott walk me over and show me, and I am just so, so impressed with those, and cannot wait to see them, uh, lit up, but I will not be there, uh, next week, unless.
Let's hope you're not there.
And I made sure the entire icon board was very well aware that we were going to have this opening, so hopefully we'll get some turnout.
Uh, just a few items from me, um, I'm sure you all saw the email of just getting those Bravo materials out for the City Hall plan that Bravo had put out, and then, um, I think, Bridget, you had said you wanted the email for, um, the Impact Breakfast, so if anybody else, um, would like the RSVP email for that, let me know, and I can get that out to you. Just a reminder that when, uh, this is, I think, but this is the first year that there is no beggars' night, it is Halloween, October thirty-first. Drive slow, drive safe, walk safe, be visible, wear your visible clothing, um, it is October thirty-first, what, six to eight? Is the beggar, or is the?
Halloween.
Halloween, right?
It's six o'clock, is that late?
I'm usually six to eight sitting there, I think.
It's only, I won't be around.
Or, or you can hide. I'll be sitting in my garage, and I'll be handing out candy as long as I can.
Full-size candy bars?
Uh, no, but I got Pokemon cards, so, yeah, so that's, that's gonna be pretty cool, I'll advertise that now.
That's a good idea.
Do we need to bring candy for tomorrow night, or are we set up for Chunker Treat?
We have a good stock, if you would like to bring any to donate to the pool, you're welcome to.
Just realized, we didn't get a notice of that.
No, we should be okay.
Oh crap, okay.
Just realized, we didn't get a notice of that, and I thought, oh crap, okay.
Uh, and last item I have here is, uh, early voting for school board, city council, um, DMAC directors, uh, and various other things.
Bond referendums.
Bond referendums, yep.
If you live in West Des Moines.
Yep.
Yep.
Urbandale ha- or Urbandale Schools has one, I think. They've got a thing on the back, so be sure to turn your ballot over. Look at both sides. Um, early voting's available at the Polk County, uh, election office on Euclid now, and at Dallas County, and then there are other satellite locations, so be sure to vote early. Vote uh, on the day of, or absentee, I think, might have passed the absentee bail, mailing re- uh, date, but, yeah, that's all I got.
Can I mention one more thing real quick, cause I had it on my list and I forgot it? And, and that is, uh, I keep bringing up the all our welcome piece, and how we need to have some level of conversation around that. Uh, a lot of us were involved in developing, not really the specifics of the proclamation, but supported it, and with the idea that it would spark a conversation. And because I always go last at these roundtable things, no one's ever there to back me up on that and say, yes, we need to do that. So I'm trying to encourage all of you.
We need to do that.
To keep bringing it up with me, and let's get this done. I, let's get something on the schedule. Um, so I just wanted to remind you all of that.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, we are at the end of our regular journey, uh, agenda, and I think we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good work, Blake.